Good evening. What is the meeting?
October 8th, 2013. A couple of different items on the agenda this evening. But we would like to open up with an update from the Rail Trail Committee and the chair person, Kate Kane. Kate, good evening.
Good evening.
Is the Rail Trail Committee here? You want to introduce people?
I'm actually only member of the Rail Trail Committee.
Okay. Great, please, you have the floor.
Just to reiterate, the charge of the Rail Trail Committee, which is an ad hoc committee, is to develop a feasibility study on the conversion of the Bay Colony Rail into a recreational path. We have been working for a little over two years. We have a draft of the feasibility study that is available on the town website under the committee's heading. This past May, we went to town meeting and requested funds between $35,000 and $50,000 for use, to be used for contracting with outside experts in the areas of engineering and legal issues and environmental issues. This initiative was not upheld at town meeting. The committee has not met over the course of the summer and we're going to be reconvening meetings this fall. However, over the course of the summer, I have conducted meetings and phone conversations with contacts in the city of Newton and in Needham. The city of Newton will be moving ahead with their project. They will be commencing construction, I believe, this month. The city of Newton was able to address issues and do their research with resources they had in-house. They have engineering, construction, and legal teams that are far greater than that at the town of Dover. The city of, the town of Needham will be meeting on November 13th to put the initiative in front of the townspeople. Needham chose, elected last winter to hire Fay Spofford-Thorndyke, which is an engineering consulting firm, and they covered issues that they found that the town didn't have the resources to address. We have a copy of that report and we've been reviewing it to kind of facilitate our research. Also this summer, I conducted meetings with members of town departments here, town engineering and legal department and highway department. And at this point, I don't know that we as a committee have the resources available to put together a feasibility study at a completed level in order to bring it to town meeting. I don't think we have the resources available or the expertise on the committee. So I think I'm here today looking to the board of selectmen for advice on what we should do moving forward with that. My concern are issues, which are legal issues, which are right of way, and questions we have about the MBTA lease. We have engineering questions that may come up as we develop the path and construction issues, as well as any potential environmental issues. And we want to look into this, whether to base our decision on whether or not we want to secure environmental insurance for the project.
Well, Kate, thank you. I know when we created this committee a couple of years ago, three years ago, you know, there's a lot of skepticism around town and what you guys would, what the finished product would be like. Let me just say that having firsthand knowledge of how hard you guys worked, thank you very much. It's a shame that you could not complete the charge, but I understand why. But you've worked very, very hard and I thank you. That being said, I know Carol, you have some comments at this point.
Well, yes, to sort of continue on, because the charge was very specific. It was strictly to do a study.
Correct.
To look at the pros and cons and the feasibility of it, with the expectation that when the study was completed, appropriately completed, that it would be accepted by the board of selectmen as a study. And based upon the recommendations in the study and the issues, we would choose or not choose to bring it to town meeting. And that town meeting would make the ultimate decision about converting that to a recreational path. So, you know, I think at this point, what we need to do, because you have so much knowledge, certainly in the draft report, but also there's stuff in the committee's heads that aren't on the report. And what I would like to suggest, so that we don't lose what has been gained over three years, you know, excuse me for a moment, there are chairs in the, in the great hall that you might want to bring in if you want, or you can sit on the floor, whatever is comfortable. Okay. If you want to sit, there are chairs you could, you could bring in. So I hate to see that go to waste. So what I would like to suggest is that we ask the committee to reconvene after the summer recess and finish the report as best they can. In other words, take the draft, make sure that the current draft is as deep as you can get with the topics that you have been able to report on and study. And then conclude the report with a detailed description, again, as you can do, of the outstanding issues.
Okay.
Anything you know about the outstanding issues and suggestions on how to pursue getting answers to those. You know, this one we could do in-house, this one we might need to go to use a engineering firm for and so forth. So that if the Rail Trail Committee, or if there was an intent in town to finish it at some point, that a new committee could just take it and run with it instead of having to start from scratch or even taking two steps back.
Okay.
Okay, I am, I support that thought process. I definitely want to see you guys, and it was in draft form, and I would like that finished to the extent you can.
Absolutely.
Okay. When are you going to reconvene? Do you have an idea?
We'll probably be having our first meeting ideally next Tuesday or the Tuesday after.
Oh, good, so that's relatively quick, good. So at that point, logistically, you'd come back in with the finished product, you'd present that to us, and we would...
We would accept it like we accept any other study or plan or...
And dismantle the Rail Trail Committee, except for further discussion?
Or, I think, further discussion, put it on hold. I think, you know, a lot depends. We could sort of segue into the next agenda item because they both work together, so...
That's what I was trying to do.
Very well done. Boom, here we go.
I would think that if we as a committee are able to meet next week, that we're probably looking at maybe five to six weeks, given that it's a volunteer committee and we have to get people to gather their, their information, that we could be back here at that some point prior to, you know, maybe hopefully December to submit the feasibility study.
I think it's important to, you know, take as much time as you need to get it, especially with all the attachments and just thinking about all the reports that we have, they're scattered in the clouds somewhere, you know, bringing it all together into a very formal with all the addendums and so forth, so however, you know, however long it takes. You know, we do know that this is a contentious issue, but we know that there are folks that are interested in pursuing the possibility of a rail trail as well. And there's a group of individuals that have been working on this on a positive perspective, informally, and now a little bit more formally, as the Friends of the Dover Greenway, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, so maybe we need to hear from them because they, they have some interest in doing what can be done so that a complete study can be done. So Alan, would you like to introduce anybody else?
One second. Kate, we all done with Kate?
Well, I think...
Yeah, it's all coming, but I just wanted...
Yeah, that's, I think that's where the committee stands today.
Kate, thank you, then we look forward to that as soon as humanly possible, I guess.
Yeah, no, I'll just keep you guys updated as to progress via email and let you know how we come along.
Yes. Now, as we move on, our next agenda item is the Friends of the Rail Trail, but from what I just heard, there's a different, Friends of the Greenway? Please, introduce someone who has here, please, that...
Sure, my name is Alan Mossen from Haven Street. I'm one of the founder members of the Friends of the Dover Greenway, as we're allowed calls. Actually, many of the room here tonight are from the group. And so as you just heard, the Rail Trail Committee did a great job putting out all this information for the town, but they've reached a stumbling block, which is completing the professional legal and technical advice that the town doesn't have. So the Friends of the Greenway are going to offer a solution for the selectmen, which is that we would provide the funds to complete that technical aspect of the report. And that we would need approval from the selectmen to accept those funds under the town gives policy for that purpose. The, just to give you a little bit of background, the Friends group is formed by Dover residents to really promote this project. And we have members of the PTO, the Dover Mother's Association, scouts, and in fact, we've got a lot of the butters who are really excited about this project and want to go forward. And since the town meeting, we collected over 240 names from people who enrolled in the group who see the vision that we do, that this is the current abandoned, overgrown rail line that's in town, would be much better served for the town as an open access recreational path that we could all use. So what we're proposing is that we would raise the funds from the citizens of Dover and provide it to the selectmen to complete that technical aspect of the report on behalf of the Rail Trail Committee.
Okay, so is there a legal entity, the Friends of the Greenway, already set up?
Right, so we have prepared all the paperwork to form a 501(c) organization. Of course, we're, they want to ask you for money until we know the selectmen will accept them. We'll give the paperwork prepared and ready to form this organization formally under the 501(c) rules and do it in that manner.
Okay, let me very, be very clear, that it would just be our acceptance of funds so you could complete a study?
Right.
I want to be very clear on that.
Right.
Okay.
So we have said all along, and you're absolutely right, it's worth reiterating again and again and again, from day one, we have said that if the selectmen's recommendation were to be to do the conversion, that it would go to town meeting. Now, the fact of the matter is that it legally has to go to town meeting because the town meeting has to vote the MBTA lease. There'll also be costs involved with it. So regardless, it would always go to town meeting for the actual process of producing a Greenway, and this is just before the study.
Absolutely.
Can you give me an approximate number of how many people in the Friends of Greenway, please?
So we've, since the meeting, we've signed up 240 people. There's 150 voted in favor of the motion at the town meeting. And that's only in the last, that's only over the summer, so we really are starting to ramp up because we realize that we need to involve all the aspects of town, including the butters, and everyone wants to use the trail. So we're building, but that's just over the summer we've accumulated those numbers and numbers.
The numbers are strong enough to suggest to me that we allow something like this, and we'll get into some little deeper conversation, that allows townspeople to expend their own money, so to speak, to bring this to a certain level of intelligence. I don't know if I was eloquent in that, but I was trying to be. But 240 participants, 240 townspeople, okay.
I was out of town at the, for the Dover Days Fair, but I believe, did you have a booth there?
Yeah, we have a booth there, and in fact, we intend, as the year goes on, to be at those kind of Dover events, to continue to involve people in the group. And as I said, most of those people weren't even at town meetings, so not 150 voted for the motion originally, because I think a lot of the naive thought this was a no-brainer. And so we'd like to, to really make people realize that this is going to happen in town meeting at a barca, and we're prepared to put our shoulder behind it and do that with the town.
There is a lot of due diligence required to get to the final product of recommendation, and there are a lot of processes in the town already. So if this were to go forward, those processes would have to be met every single step.
So it seems to me that the mission, if that's the right word, of the Dover, Friends of the Dover Greenway is to, in effect, complete what the charge of the Rail Trail Committee, which was to bring forward a report, which you've been unable to do because there are, you know, there are no funds available and you need certain expertise which you don't have within your group.
They would be raising the funds necessary to hire...
Right.
...outside groups. And then the, a existing committee, separate, I think, from the Friends of the Greenway, would continue the task of writing a feasibility study. Our committee, as it exists right now, is staffed with both opponents, proponents, and neutral people, so I think that's important. The feasibility study is completed by a, as close to unbiased group as possible, then maybe a group of proponents. That my, people may find that that, they might be a little wary of a report that was developed by Friends Group.
And I think, you know, again, to reiterate what Carol and Jim have said, you know, we're not approving the building of a rail trail.
No.
All we're, all we're discussing this evening is completion of a feasibility study.
So the approval of anything in the future would go to town meeting, any land use approval, which we've said...
You said from day one.
Oh, okay. You know, the gift and grant policy in the town, if you raise this money, you have to come back to us and say, hey, it's 50 grand, and we have to approve that, just so you're aware of that, or whatever the case, the number may be.
Right, and that's why we wanted to get your approval to go ahead and do everything on this, like, now is, are willing to accept the funds.
So perhaps one of the items that the Rail Trail Committee can address in their final draft, I won't call it final report, but their final draft, is to make sure that, that there's, that there's been quantified the dollars that are going to have to be spent. In other words, if, if the, if the report says it's 50, as we asked for a town meeting, then that's what the Friends knows is required. You know, if you look at it again now and go, oh, we, but you know, there's this and there's that, and it's 35, or it's 65, then they need to know that as well.
That's a good point. Okay. You have any other comments? Anyone from the Friends of the Greenway? I'll have to get used to that, excuse me. Like a little twist, though, I like that.
We're not going to have food trucks, though.
Just carts.
Just carts.
Okay, what is our next step here, then?
Well, so I don't think we have to vote on the changing the charge, because the charge is to issue a report, so...
Okay, give them, Kate, that change, good.
I think that's fine.
And to our new friends?
So I think, I think what, what Alan and crew was asking for is just a sense that if they were to raise the money, that we would, I...
Right, we have to know if we accept it before we can ask people to raise the money.
Well, I don't know if I'm going to call for a follow-up vote. I don't know that you've raised the money, so forth and so on. But I'm inclined, because of the number of people, and everyone has a say in this town, that I, you know, I would like you, I would like to encourage you to continue what you're doing. And I don't know how solid our statement that is to you, but...
You'd obviously like...
Right.
Something more solid, to go to people and say, the board of selectmen have approved that they would accept the funds before we even want to ask people for the money. Because if we raise the money and then the board of selectmen say, actually, we can't take the money, puts us in bias.
I can appreciate that. Robin, comments?
Well, I'm not sure, under the gift policy, if we can pre-approve acceptance of a gift.
Well, what, the gift policy says that it strongly suggests a group to come in, like you've done this evening, to tell us what they're going to do. And then we'll give them a warm, fuzzy feeling.
This is your warm, fuzzy feeling.
Okay. There's a lot of things, we don't know what this final report from Kate is going to look like either.
Right.
There's a lot of X-factors, but I encourage you strongly, because I know how hard these guys have worked. The town didn't want to spend the taxpayers' money to complete the report, loud and clear. I get that. And we're not going to do that. If you guys want to spend your own money, based on what the Rail Trail Committee will come out with on the final draft report, then I would encourage that.
I would agree.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions regarding this?
No more comments?
Just one.
Please, please step, step forward, please.
My name's Rob, and I live on Noahwood Drive. And if it's appropriate, I'm just, I'm curious if you could articulate any circumstances under which you would refuse to give once the funds hit the place.
The final draft report, whatever that may be, might be an X-factor. We don't know what it looks like. I certainly don't. And I don't want to, you know, say nothing or everything.
Yeah, and again, I'm, it's a very open-ended question, but I think in terms of putting a little bit more substance behind the warm, fuzzy feeling, if there are circumstances under which we know we would run afoul of receiving the selectmen's approval, because I've been through this process before, it'd be helpful to know.
Well, you know, to be honest, we haven't either.
Okay.
And sometimes lawyers get involved, too, to which we all know from the last nine months, there are a lot of lawyers involved in different things around town. So I can't speak for what actions they're going to take against us for what we've said tonight, let alone what we might vote on in a few months. So there's a couple of X-factors. Again, I strongly recommend you guys going forward. It's your money. You know, I, I would love to see a final report. I said that at town meeting, and I still want to see it today. I will not spend a taxpayer's dollar on this report, that's all. I, I don't want to be too vague to you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, that being said, any other comments or questions? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kate, thank you again for all your hard work. Friends of the Greenway, thank you for coming in. If you'd like to stay for our meeting, that's up to you, clearly, but if you'd like to leave, I'll give you an opportunity to leave if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as we move along, the request for placement of the Dover Sherburne Booster's signage is next on the agenda. And...
John?
John?
I'm joking, I'm sorry. He's the only fellow in the room.
Okay, Greg, please?
A resident had asked to come before the board this evening in order to discuss placement of a sign for championship team, state championship team from the region, however...
See, a booster's vest, so...
Are you Sarah? I'm Sarah.
Oh, good.
There you go, perfect timing.
We just started the discussion about the agenda item, which is the booster's signage.
Oh, okay, we didn't know.
So, please, Greg was summarizing an email you had sent, but if you'd like to continue, please, I'll start from the top.
Okay. My name's Sarah Gribb, and I've lived in Dover since 1987, and had two boys go through the school system. And the boosters have volunteered to put up signage for the athletes, the teams that have won state championships. And I was saddened to hear that Dover had said that they would not put them up. So I brought the president of the Boosters Association to, to explain to you what the signage is and hope that we could get that up for our student athletes who have done so well. We have five teams that won over since 2009.
Yep. Okay, please, if you need to introduce yourself for the television?
Sure, my name's Phil Skatcher, I live at 42 Rush Hill Road in Sherburne, Massachusetts. And I'm president of the Dover Sherburne Boosters Association. Many of you might be aware of the Boosters Association based on previous interaction with the organization, but we're a group that represents all sports at the high school, middle school, champion, you know, different, you know, themes for them, fundraising themes, acquiring assets that, you know, the school may not be able to provide. And, you know, one of the themes that Sarah asked me to speak to tonight was, one of the components that we believe in is athletic recognition for our, you know, for our athletes that are fortunate enough to participate and achieve, in some cases, the highest level of success in their chosen sport, which is a state championship. And, you know, my history with the Boosters organization, those over the last two years I've come in as president, there were individuals involved prior to me, of which I understand there was a, a meeting, or they came to the Dover Selectmen years ago and potentially asked to, to, I guess, receive permission to post signage at the town line that would recognize the athletic accomplishments of various teams, as Sarah mentioned, starting in 2000, 2009, girls tests, that won a state championship. And then from there, 2010, boys soccer, 2011, girls soccer, 2012, boys lacrosse, and last year, boys lacrosse again, were champions in their sports. So, you know, what we are asking that town of Dover to consider is to follow a theme that we've successfully executed on in town of Sherburne, where the Sherburne Selectmen reviewed the application years ago and approved or permitted signage to go in at the various town lines in the community, representing or referencing the accomplishments of the athletes. I have, you know, for your review, it might be helpful to, you know, this is kind of a blank illustration...
Yep.
...of what the, what the signage looks like.
Thank you.
Travel to go around, so...
Thank you.
Yep. And essentially, the prototype is a, it's a parking sign, if you will, 12 inches by nine inches, that is mounted on a post at the town lines. Essentially, there are three plates as part of the orientation. The first plate is at the top of the post that we mount on. The second plate carries forward the remaining two teams, and the third plate is for future expansion, in hopes that we'll be successful, of course, winning more state championships. So we're an optimistic group. But these signs are located at three town lines in the town of Sherburne, the Bedfield Town Line on Route 27, the Holliston South Town Line on Route 16, and the Framingham Town Line on Western Avenue. And we would, you know, welcome the opportunity to follow a similar theme, you know, here in Dover, if, if you find it acceptable, to mount similar signage, you know, with various town lines in the community.
Where was it in the Framingham side? I got the 2716 and...
Western Avenue, yeah. Western Avenue, the town line, yeah.
Obviously, we're very proud of what goes on up at, at the high school, very, very proud. And, you know, you have a football team this year, great, great start, great start, 3-1 as they, as we speak, I believe.
That is correct.
You know, this particular question came up approximately four years ago, and I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, the planning board had changed certain rules and regulations regarding signage in town, and that's why we turned it down at the time.
Well, yes, absolutely. So this was at the, and I was on the board at the time, so this was on the October 15th, 2009, selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
We have our minutes right here on that. And David Heinlein was the chair at the time. The planning board had put new regs in about the signs. And my recollection is that that had to do with the size of the sign, colors, and so forth, and also trying to limit the types of signs so that we didn't get into a situation that impacted the rural look of our streets. And that had just been approved, I think, at the 2009 town meeting. So at the time, that, may I read from the minute?
Please.
Yep. Mr. Heinlein said that in the past, the board has received similar requests for a number of worthwhile organizations, which have been declined due to Dover's longstanding practice of limiting permanent signage. Mrs. Lisbon added that the planning board has recently passed regulations further limiting signage in an effort to maintain the town's rural look along its scenic roadways. While it was a difficult decision to make in the context of this wonderful achievement, and that was the 2009... Mrs. Lisbon added that the planning board has recently passed regulations further limiting signage in an effort to maintain the town's rural look along its scenic roadways. While it was a difficult decision to make in the context of this wonderful achievement, and that was the 2009 tennis, it was the sense of the board to decline this request for stated reasons. Mrs. Lisbon offered as a solution having the signs put up on school property, and Mr. Melikin further suggested looking into hanging one or more banners in the school's gymnasium. So that was a decision of the selectmen back in 2009.
Scenic roadways jumps over me also, by the way.
Well, we do a lot of, of work, the planning board and the ZBA and so forth, in maintaining scenic roadways, and I think about the amount of time they spend and legal fees that have resulted sometimes about stone walls and so forth. So we do take the view of scenic roads seriously, as well as our approach to tree cutting, you know, tree safety.
To the extent about the previous suggestion to put it into on the school's property, I think I've seen them in the banners in the gymnasium, are there things on the side of the buildings, or what's on the school property as we speak?
So it's a great question. So to the minutes, we have recognized athletic accomplishments inside the gymnasium with recognition that recognizes state championships that are hanging on the banners there. We go in there, the various sports are referenced, whether it's tennis or lacrosse, and it's always a big event for our students because when they hang the banner, as you can imagine, it's quite the scene in front of the student body where they all get together and celebrate the victory, the team gets special recognition, that kind of thing. So that has happened. This year, in fact, with regard to community signage on campus, one of our local athletes who was going for their Eagle Scout this year commissioned a project, for his Eagle Scout project, to put signage on the campus. And in some cases, it was the signage of recognizing the, one of the segments of recognizing our state champions, that was part of that project. So we have going forward, and that was approved, and, you know, that was, you'll go through the campus and you'll see these new brown and Dover Sherburne blue, you know, lettering signs that went in just this past fall, so that's brand new for us. So they are there and now.
Good. Robyn, do you have comments?
No, you know, I certainly am, having a member of the 2010 boys soccer. Once living in my home, you know, it's certainly a huge accomplishment, and it was celebrated at the town, at the time, by both the town of Dover and Sherburne, and the team were escorted into the towns with fire trucks and police, which...
You just bought a fire truck farm.
Right, which was, you know, I think an experience none of the boys on that team will ever forget in their entire lives. And so, and as a former athlete myself, it's really nice to be recognized. At the same time, I do appreciate, and I remember being on the warrant committee when the planning board's signage regulations came into effect. And, you know, it was clear that what they were trying to do, or the mandate for that was, to limit the number of permanent signs in the town of Dover.
We've taken that a step further as well, in that I think we're one of the few towns where the PMC rides through that actually requests the PMC to take down the signs. Most of them are permanent in the towns and half the paths, and we, I think we're allowed to, they put up six or eight weeks before and kept up a little bit after, and then they come down.
We would look to put them at the town lines so they wouldn't, you know...
Well, give us an example of what your thoughts are, where they would be.
Well, I looked at the map and I thought, in Medfield, where you come in on Farm Street or Center Street.
On North Farm?
Yeah.
On North Center, excuse me, right?
Yeah, 109.
On Walhull?
Walhull area, yeah. So either, you know, there's just a little piece there, but that gets a lot of traffic, and it'd be nice visual for, you know, recognition of the teams and not in a heavily populated area.
And so you're suggesting two?
And possibly coming in from native, either on Glen or Pleasant. I mean, there are a lot of roads, and we certainly would be willing to work with you where...
Well, the reason I ask that specifically is because of the scenic road thought process in Dover. And as Carol mentioned, it's taken very seriously, so... 109, and the last one was North Lot Farm. I don't know whether to take this under advisement. I'm not... Can I have a...
One last...
Oh, please, please.
You know, Robyn was on to kind of what the message is here. For me, it's not about the signs, it's about the athletes. This discussion is really about them. And being members of our community, I think, you know, the fire truck is a lifelong event they'll never forget, but the fact that they drive these roads all the time, and to see their name, and see their team, and see them referenced on a sign, as, you know, as innocent as that sounds, and as meaningful as it can be, is something that I think we owe to our athletes. You know, I respect the request of the scenic roads and byways, but it's an innocent way to recognize an achievement that is, you know, it's a lifetime memory, and it really sets them apart from, you know, other peers and other communities that, you know, we found beneficial to reward athletic performance that way, to recognition.
Yeah, no, it's a point well taken, point well taken. I, you know, I grew up playing sports, my whole family did, so I can appreciate what you're saying. There is a precedent set already, though, in 2009, based on the planning board's change to the signage. And I don't know if I'm in a position to comfortable making the change precedent right now. But I do hear the sentiment about the athletes of all, and I take that very serious. Carol, thought?
Well, I agree with everything you said. I too grew up as an athlete, so I do appreciate all that, but I must say that I think that, you know, we have, we have worked very hard over the years to limit the signage in Dover. And we know from the studies that we had relative to the Dedham Street intersection and various other signage that comes before us, usually from the chief of police, that there's, there's an aspect of, when you have a lot of signs, you see none of them. And I think that was pointed out very clearly when we were looking at the signage around the Dedham Street, Center Street, that horrible intersection. So, you know, back in 2009, I felt that the character of the town would be impacted. Not that two or three signs are going to make the difference, but I think it's starting of a slippery slope in signage, and I would, with total respect and awe for the teams that have accomplished what they've accomplished, and those, in the future that are going to accomplish the same, I would still suggest that we not expand the signage in Dover.
To Carol's point on the study we did, I think it was the end of 2011, 2000, beginning 2012, in conjunction with the development, a possible athletic development actually on Dedham Street, we did a whole study of the traffic in this area and down Dedham. And then we, I don't know how many meetings we had, everything was talked about. And it became very clear that the townspeople in Dover love the rural, love the trees, don't like the signs, certainly don't like streetlights, we have one.
Yep.
And it was a very loud statement at that time, too. So that compounding on the fact that in 2009, it was, the planning board had a lot to say about limiting signage for any reason, I'm inclined not to accept this also. Robyn?
You know, with a heavy heart and some regret, I...
I get it, I get it.
You know, I clearly understand what it's like to be an athlete and to be honored in the town, but unfortunately, I, I'm not sure that if we did this, we would be in compliance with our own regulations, and so I would really be reluctant to vote for it.
Okay. Well, you know, I know it's going to be disappointing, but I don't think we're inclined to sort approve the signage for the high school success.
Sure.
And, you know, and I say that, it doesn't come easily off my tongue, because again, I grew up being an athlete, and these kids have worked hard, and I understand that, but this particular town is a little different than, in the way they want it to look, the way they want it to be perceived, and we have to follow those mandates and guidelines. I do appreciate your time enough this evening, though, and I'm sorry, we have to report that.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Quite welcome, thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Okay, on to the next agenda item. As been the case in the last few meetings, we have certain appointments. Carol, I believe you have one this evening?
I do. Okay, on town report. First, I'd like to thank Lauren Dority for her, for her efforts on the committee, I think she was on for about 10 years. And she has chosen that tree up, and Jill French has agreed to take on a new three-year term. So I'd like to move to appoint Jill French to a three-year term expiring in 2016 for the town report committee.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Carol. And I would like to thank Lauren, too, who I know very well, and now she works very hard on that.
So we had made some appointments to the CMAC committee, the Carol Management Advisory Committee, a couple weeks ago, and at our last meeting, we changed the terms of the CMAC committee from a one-year term to a three-year term. So I have checked with the members of the committee to make sure they're willing to do this for three years rather than one, and...
And they all quit?
And they all said yes. So I would like to change the terms of Kathy Weld, Mary Hable, and Ruth Townsend to 2016 from 2014.
Good. And so we'll look to perhaps replace Ford Spalding, who did not re-up, and I thank you, Ford, for all your hard work on that.
Yep, we have an opening on the committee for that, and then the other positions which need to be updated here are the, from Park and Rec and COA.
Yes, good. Okay, thank you, Carol. Uh, we should go to...
So I move that we appoint Kathy Weld, Mary Hable, and Ruth Townsend for three-year terms.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you again. Dave, I think you have a final question, Mr. Chairman.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Starting with the Forest Warden on page six.
Please.
Fire Chief Hughes has indicated a willingness to serve again as Forest Warden.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept Jay Hughes as the Forest Warden, Forest Warden, excuse me, for a three-year term.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also on page six, the Groundwater Bylaw Enforcement Agents, the board has appointed George Junta. Mr. Hughes, Superintendent of Streets Hughes, has asked Mike and Jerry, our town engineer, if he would be willing to serve as the other Groundwater Bylaw Enforcement Agent, and he has said yes.
So Mike and Jerry? Good. I'll make the motion to appoint Mike and Jerry as the second Groundwater Bylaw Enforcement Agent for a one-year term.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
On page seven, John Gilbert has indicated a willingness to be reappointed as the measure of wooden bark.
I have to look up those responsibilities someday, so I get a little more contact.
Ask Mr. Gilbert.
I actually should, that's a good point.
They work in, and he works in concert with defense viewers.
Ah, excellent. What page is that on, so I...
Page seven?
He has something to repower to in his retirement.
Oh, yeah. So that's a three-year term?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to accept John, reappoint John Gilbert for a three-year term as the measure of wood in bark.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
And then leaping ahead to page 12. Mike and Jerry, the town engineer, has agreed to another year's appointment.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Mike, Michael and Jerry for a one-year term as town engineer. All in fa, uh, second? Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thought you were doing both.
Yeah, I have two hands. Okay.
And then on page 13, Mr. Chairman, last but certainly not least, the Veteran Services Director, Paul Carew, has agreed to re-up for another year.
Excellent. I'll make the motion that we reappoint Paul Carew as the Veteran Service Director for a one-year term.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
And that's all ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. I see a few things left, so let's go ahead. But I, we still encourage, we still encourage people to step forward and to volunteer for the many different departments and commissions and committees in the town of Dover. Now, let us go forward. The notice of non-exercise of the option to purchase Pagan Lane C, which is a 61A parcel. Who's going to speak to this?
I'll speak a little bit, just a quick background.
Please.
So we have discussed two pieces of, two major parcels that came to us late spring that we've worked on over this summer. One was Dedham Street, which we're in the process of purchasing, and the other was Pagan Lane. We did the same thing with Pagan Lane as we did with Dedham Street, we gave it to Concom and to the Open Space Committee and to the Dover Land Conservation Trust to take a look at. This piece of property didn't have the natural and environmental benefits that the Dedham Street property had. In addition, the Dover Land Conservation Trust was unable to raise the kind of funds that would be necessary to purchase it. So they informed us a couple weeks ago that they would not be interested in acquiring this land, and the Open Space Committee and Concom did not see any reason within their purview to acquire it either.
Good, I thank those particular groups for working hard, and, number one, the Dedham Street property that, as Carol mentioned, is under agreement, should close any day now, if I understand.
This week, I believe.
And then their due diligence in determining whether this particular property was wanted. So thank you. But we will execute the notice of non-exercise on this property this evening, so we will take the formal vote not to buy this property under the, under the, I guess, Section 61A guidelines.
Say Chapter 61A, thank you.
Chapter 6, that's what the C is, by the way, probably, now that I read it, thank you. Okay, I made that motion, do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, Graeme.
Does that have to be signed? Yes, please.
Thank you, Graeme. Our next agenda item, as we move along, is an update on the long-range planning committee's activities. activities. And many townspeople might not know, but there is a Long Range Committee in the town that meets faithfully every month. And whether they help out in the master survey those completed last year or two years ago, helping the planning board in developing the master plan, they do a lot of things behind the scene that help the different departments and committees in the town. And I know, Robin, you are liaison to Long Range to share, and you've come to us this evening with a request, so please, you have the floor.
So as, just as a reminder to the townspeople and all of us, I believe it was last year the master plan was put together and presented to the town. And from that plan came out recommendations to various departments. And what the Long Range Planning Committee has requested is that we, the Board of Selectmen, charge them with following up on the recommendations and then reporting back to us annually with respect to what progress has made, has been made in connection with the recommendations in the master plan. They have taken the master plan document and sorted it by recommendation and have assigned liaisons of that committee to each of the boards. And if we were, if we will provide them with the charge, they will then contact each of the boards to discuss what plans they have with respect to implementing some of the recommendations. The intent is, it would not be feasible if you took a look at these recommendations to think that all of them would be accomplished in one year, but I think it would be good for the town of Dover to follow up on those recommendations and determine whether or not, you know, it's feasible to accomplish them.
No, I think it's a great idea, but what is important is as the Long Range Committee members then open up the lines of communication to the different departments, that they, those departments openly accept when they're questioning what their plans are. So it's an important part of everyone in the town working together also moving forward so that when the Long Range Planning comes back in and sits in front of us and says, well, of the 217 things on this list, you know, we can tell you that 12 have been successfully completed. And I'm sure the town would appreciate that. There was an awful lot of work done for the master plan.
And the recommendations?
Right.
There was a lot of thought. I think it's really important to understand that the Long Range Planning Committee does not want to be put in the position of an enforcer. They're just a communicator. They want to, you know, be the, be a liaison to these departments, talk to them about the recommendations, perhaps get plans for achieving the recommendations, and then they will report back to us. I think it is a much better result than having this master plan, which was, and took a lot of time sitting in drawers. You know, at least this way we can be thinking about what those recommendations are and whether or not we can achieve some of them. You know, you will notice my name is next to me.
I didn't notice that. Thank you.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I just happened to look at the planning board, and there's one here that says, "Initiate efforts to document the state of Dover's scenic roads as well as strengthen regulations to protect them." I think, you know, having gone through a couple of master plans now over the decades, some, to your point, Robin, there are some that are actual specific items that can be acted upon. There are others that are almost statements of philosophy that are just ongoing, that, you know, that give guidance to future committees as to the culture and the history of Dover. Sort of what Jim was talking about before about signage. You know, there's a history there. And so many of these, this chart doesn't show it this way, but if you look at the chart that's in the master plan, the way it's formatted, there are very few items that are only the responsibility of one organization.
Right.
And there's always a lead agency identified, and then there are two or three or four other committees and departments identified. And once you get into that situation, you know that nothing happens to that because they're, you know, the silos don't do that. So in the sense that the Long Range Planning Committee can bring the group together.
And that's what they're assigned about.
That would be really beneficial, right, yeah.
Well, to that point, what's logistics involved here? It's easy enough for us to say, yes, you have a new charge to go forward. How is everyone going to be aware of this charge? And when I mean that, you, I'll pick an example. Of course, I can't pick a good one right now, but how is that committee that you're going to talk to going to be aware and take seriously the Long Range Committee's discussions?
So what the Long Range Planning Committee discussed at the last meeting, and it certainly hasn't been finalized, is perhaps initially drafting a letter that they would send to these committees indicating what their plan of action is, so to speak. And then they felt it was really important that each of the liaisons that they've assigned to these recommendations then contacts, either by phone or by email, the chair of that committee and begins the dialogue.
Okay, so there's thought process on how the communication lines start.
So Mark Saro, is Mark on the, on the Long Range Plan for the planning board? I mean, for the, from the planning board?
Right.
And he supports that on behalf of the planning board?
Right. Because again, you know, I can't emphasize enough, they don't want to be enforcers. They just want to be facilitators. And, you know, it may be that some of these recommendations, no action can be taken, but, you know, just so much work was put into this master plan, and to just have it sit in somebody's drawer, some of these recommendations would be really valuable to the town if we could put a plan of action in place.
Well, I just look, for instance, at the Recycling Committee meeting earlier this week, they're in the process of meeting to put together a one-to-two-year targeted mission goals thing. And I see something here about the garbage and it'd be nice for them to have the backup to say, you know, that issue was in the master plan.
Right, right.
I feel like, right.
Good, well, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So do we formally have to vote on this?
I think we formally give them the charge, right?
Yep.
So would you like to make that motion?
So I'd like to make a motion, and I'm not sure if this is the right terminology, to give the planning board the authorization to contact the various town committees to discuss recommendations that were made in the master plan and potentially have plans of action put in place to achieve those recommendations.
All right, and to report.
You meant the Long Range Plan.
The Long Range Plan, what did I say? Okay.
Yeah, I think we all know what you meant.
So did I, I just didn't say it. You know, it's a senior moment.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you would, thank the Long Range Planning Committee for taking this on.
I will.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to further discuss and/or approve the fiscal 2015 Selectmen's Highway and Police Department's capital budget requests. And I know I want to further study the Selectmen's capital budget requests, so if I'd like to table that for now, and we can talk about Highway and Police Department. And there have been no changes since the last time we discussed this.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to request that we defer the vote on the Police Department. I would really like to have the opportunity to go just talk to the Chief of Police.
You got it, which item?
The Protective Agency building, just to get a better understanding.
Well, that's in the Selectmen's budget.
Oh, that's in the Selectmen's budget?
Yeah, we just have Chief McGowan mowing the lawn. He doesn't own the building.
All right.
Pete would enjoy that one.
Then I remove, then I remove my request.
Okay. Okay. The one question I have on the Police capital budget request is, he netted out, it appears, the vehicles in his narrative in the second paragraph, I believe, the last sentence, that he nets out the full request of trade-ins. And I thought we grossed up our capital budget requests in case the trade-ins don't happen.
We do in the actual budget document.
Okay.
This is the narrative where he's explaining, not in fiscal 15, but in fiscal 16, he's going to be looking at three vehicles, but they net out. So he's looking at gross numbers in fiscal 15.
118 versus the narrative 108.
Correct.
Okay, I can accept that. Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on the Police capital budget request for fiscal 2015?
No, I would only ask that you remind the chief that over the last couple of years, that as an attachment to the capital budget request for the police vehicles, that his inventory list of cars with the mileage and so forth gets included in the package that goes to the capital budget committee.
Good point, Carol, thank you.
I think they were also interested in some of the maintenance costs, if they were any extraordinary. Am I correct or am I dreaming that?
Yes, I think, I think that's sort of done as a discussion when we call it the chief.
Okay, do you have any further comments on this, Robin?
No.
I would like to thank Chief McGowan for this write-up and his request. Thank you. Now, that being said, that I would like to approve the following capital budget requests for fiscal years 2015. Do we vote on the out years too? I just know, all right. So for 15, patrol vehicle, $36,500, and the live scan fingerprint machine, $19,285 for a total of $55,785.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next capital budget request that I'd like to review is the Highway Department. And again, a recurring theme is the hard work that Craig does in his narrative in stretching every vehicle that we have that he's responsible for to the very last piece of rubber and steel on it. Does anybody have any comments on Highway?
No.
No? Okay. And I'll make the motion that we approve the capital budget request for Highway for the fiscal year 2015 for the following two items. A one-truck plow, oh, one truck, a one-ton truck with a plow for $56,640, and a slide-in sander, $15,550 for a total of $72,190. Do I hear a second?
Second. I would just add for the viewers that both of these items were originally purchased in 1999, so we're replacing...
Okay, for the viewers, both of these purchased in 1999. Thank you, Robin. And do I hear it? Is that a second?
That's a second.
Yes, then, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Robin. Okay, and again, we'll put off voting on the Selectmen's capital budget requests until perhaps the next meeting or as soon as possible. When does capital meeting, or...
We have a meeting, I think, in two weeks, and CMAC meets next week, so we'll be fine.
Good, thank you. Okay. Our next agenda item is something that I enjoy, and Robin, hopefully you'll attend the first one.
I have to get rid of my box of cards.
That's true. Which is the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting. And every January in Boston, it's a wonderful meeting with a great speaker and then a trade show. And it gives us the opportunity to meet different Selectmen from the surrounding towns and to gather different ideas to the different workshops that they have. So this, the next, the 35th annual MMA meeting is in Boston, January 24th and 25th, 2014. And to the extent I believe we have to vote to attend, is that, oh, just tell Grae that we select her now.
Just let me know if you'd like to attend.
Well, I want to, so I'm already, I've already put it on my calendar.
This is Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, the Sat, we go to the Friday one, definitely. There's plenty of workshops, there's plenty of keynote speakers Friday morning. It's usually very, very good. I think the three of us will go, and Dave, you'll accompany us, and Grae, you'll accompany us also. Great.
Wouldn't miss it.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, next agenda item is the approving of the 2014 holiday calendar. And is there anything new on this list, Grae?
No, yeah, just the dates have been adjusted.
Okay.
For the 2014 calendar year.
Okay. Okay, nothing new, just the dates changed accordingly. I'll make the motion to accept the 2014, which actually goes into 2015, which is January 1st, the holiday calendar. Do we hear a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other business, special licenses. We have six this evening. I'll read them and we'll vote on all at once at the end. So, if I may, the first one is October 9th, which is tomorrow, at the Boston College Connor Center. The second, a wedding is October 12th at the Boston College Connor Center. The third, another wedding at the Boston College Connor Center.
October 13th.
October 13th, thank you. Okay, the next one, October 25th at, where am I? Let's see where this one is.
Elm Bank.
Elm Bank, thank you.
It's the Cognic, Cognic Stadium.
Good, thank you. So that's on October 25th at Elm Bank. And we skipped, October 17th is an awards dinner at Elm Bank. Two more. The next one is October 25th at the Boston College Connor Center. And last, at the Connor Center on October 26th. All of these have been approved by the Chief of Police prior to us looking at them this evening. Thank you, Chief. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to accept the six special licenses as described. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
There were only two here.
There's two, thanks. As to one. I think we had seven, by the way.
One was added last minute, it was just submitted.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I spoke wrong, there were seven special, special licenses.
Yeah, thank you.
As I was reading that, I think, hmm.
Yeah, one came in right at the end of the day. Scrambled with the... Scrambled with the chief.
Okay, good, thank you. Our next agenda item, surplus, surplus items from Town House. Dave, do you want to speak on this?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. In our ongoing housekeeping efforts, we try to get rid of junk after a certain amount of time, and basically this, these are all surplus pieces of furniture that have been sitting around on the stage or in the back entrance, which is really the front entrance foyer, and it's just clutter. Our intention, if we disposed of it, would be to take it to the transfer station.
Okay. So, is that what actually happens, it's taken to the transfer station?
There's no value to this.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion, um, that we get rid of the surplus equipment as described that has no value, including, I don't, do I have to get into detail? No, thank you. Uh, I'll make that motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Okay. One of my favorite items is the citizens' comments, and I guess I'd like to, um, stop. Yes. You know, it, it's not an easy thing to sometimes talk about student athletes and not give them everything, um, all the accolades they deserve. They've done a great job, and it was a tough decision, but there is precedence that we have to adhere to. And sometimes it doesn't sit well with me, but, you know, there are things that we should adhere to, the moral, um, image of the town, what the planning board has done, the actions in 2009, all weighed very heavily. So, don't think it's an easy decision to make not to give all the accolades to the student athletes who deserve them.
Well said.
With that, any other citizens' comments? None, uh, then I'll, um, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good night.